Comment. We are offering translation services for our Spanish speaking attendees. To access translation, please click on the globe at the bottom of your screen and then language. At this time, we'd like to ask if anyone who needs translation would please click on the participants icon at the bottom of the screen and raise your hand. Mandy, do we have anyone?
Yeah, our translator's mic is not working at the moment, but I do not see any hands going up.
Okay, very good. At this point, we're going to move into item number 3.01, which is public comment. At this point in the agenda, the board welcomes comments on matters of district interests. The board will listen but cannot engage in discussion or take action on items not listed on the agenda. Generally, this section of the agenda is for individuals or a representative of a group to address the board on issues not listed on the agenda. Speakers who wish to discuss items on the agenda are requested to wait until that item comes before the board. However, comments may be given on agenda items at this time if it's not possible for speaker to stay until the agenda item is heard by the board. If you submit written comments on a topic, you will not also be allowed to speak on that topic. Comments or correspondence submitted anonymously will not be accepted. You can contact us through the public comment request form prior to our meeting, and that's on our website or while the meeting is in session. If you wish to speak at the meeting, click on the participants icon at the bottom of your screen and select raise your hand. When your name is called, you may restart your video if you wish and unmute your audio. If you need assistance with your video, please let us know and we'll attempt to fix it. If you have a problem with your audio, please click on the thumbs down icon and we'll attempt to assist you. All public comments will be limited to three minutes, a limit of approximately 450 words of written comment. Any portion of your comment extending past the 450-word limit may not be read aloud due to time restrictions. All written comments that are not read into the record will be made part of the meeting minutes, provided that such comments are received prior to the end of the meeting. Please be aware that written public comments, including your name, may become public information. And again, we would say you may not cede your time to give someone else extra time. And again, just please remember to raise your hand. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board in this section of public comment? We're going to have other opportunities for people to address the board on specific issues. Mandy, I see we have someone who wishes to speak right now. Do they want to speak now or do they want to wait until we, until we open the public hearing? Do you know?
Let me look at that request. He had one for public comment and one for the public hearing.
Okay, very good. Then I'm going to, let me set my watch for three minutes. And we'll go to the public comment. Okay, so we have a request to speak from Clint Firestone. Mr. Firestone, are you there?
Yes, I am. Good morning.
Okay, good morning. Your three minutes is beginning now.
Good morning, board. My name is Clint Firestone. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm here to speak on behalf of my two children, who attend CL Smith, as well as all students in the district, who will be required to choose an independent study option for the upcoming school year. The district recently communicated to parents that families who request an independent study program will be offered an alternative education that is not provided by the highly qualified teaching staff of San Luis Coastal. San Luis Coastal Unified School District received over $12 million in COVID relief funding to utilize on COVID-related learning and school reopening expenses. As a concerned community stakeholder, I am respectfully asking for clarification as to why the district is not utilizing the COVID relief funding to create an independent study academy for our students, considering that we are still in the middle of a pandemic with no insight. The Instructional Services Department currently employs nine teachers on special assignment, as well as two administrators who should be able to lead our district in providing an engaging independent study option for all students who request it. Independent study teachers should be available to support the academic, social, and emotional progress of our children by keeping them connected and engaged to the fullest extent possible. In the best interest of all students, I am asking that the Board of Education require the district to utilize the $12 million in COVID relief funding to create an independent study academy that is provided by the highly qualified teaching staff in San Luis Coastal. I am confident that a district who has recently been honored with the prestigious California District of Excellence Award for its innovative and effective school programs can absolutely work together to construct this program for our children. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Mandy, is there anyone else who wishes to address the board in this portion of the meeting?
No.
Okay, let's move on to item number 4.01, Business and Budget Update. I believe that would be Mr. Pinkerton. Thank you.
Yeah, so just a few quick things for the board. You'll see that at the bottom of this agenda, we have the 45-day revise that came out. So there were some positive things that I'll highlight for the board right now. You know, some, some extra funds came to the district for both special education funding ongoing, which was great, as well as some one-time funds for special ed. We also received extra funds for the SIR3 program. And I'll be bringing kind of a plan update to the board at an upcoming board meeting, and we'll do a public hearing for that as well. And, you know, basically taking our LCAT feedback that we got in the spring and trying to get even more feedback as we put together this SIR3 plan. Again, the goal with these one-time dollars is to really try to have these extended programs for kids, right? Get kids caught up academically and try to extend that as long as we can over the next three years, hopefully, as those dollars have some timelines that we have to hold. They did keep unemployment insurance down, so instead of raising it to 1.23, they kept it at 0.5%. So that's based on your overall payroll cost, so that was a plus. And while those things are all great, there were some negatives for us as a basic aid school district. And so probably the top one was instituting TK universally across California. Not that that's the issue of having TK or adding another grade level, basically. So instead of having 13 grade levels, we will have 14, and something that builds in over the next few years. But there was no funding stream for us. So basically, this is a grade level, you know, a number of teachers that we're going to have to, you know, pick up, pay for over the next few years, along with aides. There are requirements, 1 to 10, in terms of teachers and aides, those types of things. So our hope is that that'll change over the next year as this kind of comes forward. This is a planning year. And so we'll have a lot more discussion with the board as this, as this comes forward. There are definitely some issues with just overall classroom space at our school sites. And so it probably is a really good thing that we're going through a facility master plan right now. But I, again, I'll, I'll share that information with the board at upcoming meetings. And I'm sure Diane and Rick will work with you on, you know, kind of TK and how that rollout will happen. The other kind of negatives that came out of this were, you know, there was no money towards STIRS and PIRS. And so, you know, again, we're seeing up to 2% increases in both classified as well as STIRS. So those are the retirement systems for a classified and certificated employees. And so that, you know, even though unemployment didn't go up 0.7%, STIRS or PIRS, I should say, went up, you know, 2%. So, and that's 2% of all personnel costs. So it is a dramatic amount, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars going towards retirement. And so, you know, those are things we're going to have to make sure our employees understand, right? That a lot of funding is going towards personnel costs. And so it's just something that we're always aware of and always looking out for. LCFF, so the Local Control Funding Formula, went up by 5%. So other districts in the state of California benefit from that, right? In terms of more student, more money towards every student that they have. For us, that, you know, that doesn't affect us in terms of income stream, but we will have to put more money out for both our charter school students that, state charter school students that we pay for, as well as the Bellevue-Santa Fe students, because their amount that we have to pay will go up a little bit. So that's not significant, but just something for the board to know. Other than that, on the business, and so that's kind of budget, 45-day revise. Unaudited actuals will come out mid-September to the board, so that I'll give you a true recap of the 2021 school year. And then, of course, in first interim, we'll put in all this new information with the budget, as well as we'll have a much better understanding of our personnel costs at that point to share with the board.
Okay, Mark?
Yeah, so Ryan, we've gotten a lot of, a lot of money from both the state and the feds to help us through this tough times. And you've been really diligent about giving us an update, but I can't grasp it all. It's just, you know, there's a piece here and there's a piece there. So I don't know if my fellow board members would be interested in getting maybe a clear breakdown of where that, where that money's gone to date. I, you know, the ventilation, we jumped right on that. I appreciate it. But I just, there's just so many moving parts with this. So I don't know if the rest of the board's interested, but I know I am.
Ryan, did you do that prior? Did we have to do any of that, given what we, the things we approved in June? Or is, is, so, so do we already have that information?
Yeah, we've, and we've shared it before, but it's a, you know, again, it's a lot, right? It's a lot going, a lot of moving parts. I have no problem sharing it again, bringing it up. Again, like I said, we're gonna, we, we have to have a, a public hearing and, and get public, as well as our, our staff, right, get their insights on this SIR3 plan. So probably when I bring that forward to the board, what I'll do is I'll recap, kind of, you know, the, the previous expenditures, as well as kind of where we're at with this current plan. So the board did approve an expanded learning plan with the state funds back in June, along with the LCAT. But there's no reason why I can't review that with you as we, we move forward. You know, it's going to be something that we're going to be looking at over the next three years, right? As we try to extend these programs for students.
Okay, so is everybody, everybody's in agreement that, that Ryan will get us that information? It may take a little while. We'll try to wrap that up into one thing, the public hearing that he's talking about. Everybody's good with that? Okay.
And then lastly, just for the board to know, you know, Chris Bonin has really worked diligently with both the maintenance crew and custodial crew this year. So taking maps of every school, charting, you know, kind of classrooms, getting cleaned, where we're at, those types of things, to ensure that, you know, everything is in tip-top shape, right, as, as we enter the school year. So just know crews will be coming around to every single school site to make sure that they're all manicured, ready to go. We spent a lot of time on field maintenance this year and letting things grow and trying to deal with, you know, drought issues and the amount of water. And so they're, they're, they're on it. And so what we'll do is, as the next few weeks enter in, any school site that was kind of got behind, we send out teams of custodians to help out, to make sure that the sites are ready to go day one. So I just want you to know that. So if you go by a school site and go, man, the lawn doesn't look good in front, it's all on a calendar. Everything's going to get hit before school starts, so I just want you to know that as we move forward. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Move on to item 4.02, Ed Services Update. I know we're going to be hearing a lot from Diane. Diane, is there anything you'd like to add right now?
Yes, just, just a couple of updates from Educational Services. I think the first one is the most exciting. We are opening our schools full day, five days a week, for all of our students this fall. And as I said, really, really excited. We're getting feedback from our parents about that. Our staff is excited as well. Staff and parent communication went out last week detailing some of the safety measures that we will be following on our return. I'd love for the board to know that we are working really closely with our own public health department and following guidance from the CDC and the CDPH to make sure that we have safe openings. One of the things that we are offering this year is a partnership with our Slow Public Health to offer vaccination clinics at our secondary sites. Data is telling us that those who are, in fact, a very high percentage of those who are coming up COVID-positive are unvaccinated, and we want to support the effort for families and students in our community who want to be vaccinated in a, in a pretty seamless opportunity at the registration events. And then finally, on the topic of our reopening, we are on the last days of our safety plan, and we'll be providing that to the board and the public at the end of this week. Couple of other topics for you. We're really proud of the professional development that is being offered before school begins for our staff. ISLA, led by Rick Mayfield, our new director, Lessey O'Connor, and Laura Storm have put together impressive opportunities for our teachers. We are in the middle of our first-ever Kickstart Conference Week. We have over 200 opportunities for our teachers, sessions that they can volunteer to participate in. Most of them are via Zoom. Some of them are in-person, obviously with all of our safety measures in place. And then over the next couple of weeks, again, ISLA, just really going that extra mile, has invited Douglas Fisher and Nancy Frey. They are forward-thinking in the education community and are the authors of Leading the Rebound, really looking at the needs of kids after having distance learning for a year, year and a half, depending on the kiddo. We really think that they are going to be vibrant, useful, professional development, starting with our, our leadership teams and then moving to the classroom teacher. And then finally, while we do hope that every one of our students comes back to the in-person learning, we are working on independent study through AB 130, and you'll be hearing a little bit, actually a lot more about that during the study session.
Okay, yes, Catherine, and then Eve?
Just a clarification there, Diane, for me. So the vaccination centers are on both or all three of our secondary sites?
They are officially scheduled for our middle schools at this point, and our school nurse is working to have them at our high schools. And we're very confident that we'll be able to put them there. So the secondary is all four.
Right, Eve? And Eve, you're, you're on mute.
How long are the vaccination stations going to be there on secondary?
Just at the registration event, so single-day opportunities.
Well, I'd just like to reiterate on behalf of some people who are in our parent population that the population at, at the high school is at low risk for getting the disease and that the vaccine is still in an emergency authorization, and so it has not yet been approved. And so I'm just questioning if that really falls into the category of past history, where we on campus had approved vaccines? That's my question. It's right now maybe a rhetorical question, but I just want to let you know that there's a great amount of the population that would not approve that move.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Mark?
Yeah, thanks. So I have a question. So in part, in making this available to the public, we have heard within the last couple of days that within, in Florida, 20,000 people, which is a new record, have contracted COVID. And among those, it's my understanding that maybe the majority, but a large amount of them are young people. So I don't know if it's the Delta variant. I don't know what's causing it. But I have to tell you, as one board member, I'm hearing from people praise and congratulations and lots of thanks for doing this. So goes both ways.
Okay, Catherine, and then Marilyn?
I didn't have my hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you did. Marilyn?
Yeah, I would just like to thank Mr. Buckman for his comments.
Good. Anyone else? And I guess I would point out that anybody under 18 needs parent permission to be vaccinated. And so I think it's important, and I concur with Mr. Buckman and Mrs. Roger, you know. I believe that the most, that the largest percentage of unvaccinated people, well, clearly are between 18 and 45, actually 12 and 45, 49 years old. And that that's also where we're seeing the greatest increases in serious COVID-19 infections, as well as hospitalizations and ICU admissions. It, I would, I personally would be, would want to do everything I can to keep people out of hospitals and to keep people well and to keep people safe. And so I'm absolutely in favor of us partnering with county health so that we can provide people who want to be vaccinated the opportunity to be vaccinated. So I'll just leave it at that. Anybody else? Eve?
It's never mentioned that young people receiving the vaccine are also hospitalized as a result of receiving the vaccine. So I should go, that should go on the record also.
Hey, Mr. Buckman?
I, I mean, there's inherent in everything, there's going to be some abnormalities. There are adults that have done it. There are people all over the world that have, a small minority. In the past, this country and the world has been able to start, stop pandemics such as smallpox and only when we started to follow the rules of the experts. Chickenpox is under control. Each and all of those killed millions of people across the world. And I think anything that this district can do to support the, the health departments is going to save lives. And in anything, there's some inherent risk, but this is hugely important, not just for the United States, not just for San Luis Obispo County, but for the entire world.
Eve, and then, let's see if we can, if anybody else has anything to say after Eve, because I do want to move forward if, if everybody's okay with that. Eve, please go ahead.
Well, my final comment would be that this vaccine, you can't go back historically and say it, in the past, it was stopped, because those vaccines were actual vaccines, whereas this is experimental gene therapy. And this kind of technology has not been used in the past. So it is experimental, and the FDA recognizes it as experimental.
Anybody else?
And unauthorized.
Sorry, Dr. Prater, and then Mrs. Roger?
Mrs. Roger, would you like to go before me?
Sure, I'd be happy to. My comment is more personal and anecdotal, but I, I have a family member who contracted polio at nine years old and spent the next 20 years in an iron lung before he died. And had there been an experimental vaccine available to my family, I'm sure that they would quite willingly have availed themselves of that. So the experimental or the authorization that currently the vaccine is under, I find to be, it would not dissuade me and it would not dissuade many people from taking it, in my opinion.
Chris, I appreciate that you want to move on.
Well, I actually, Mark, excuse me, it's Dr. Prater. Mark, it's Dr. Prater's turn, please. And then you'll have your opportunity after Dr. Prater.
Yeah, all, all I would want to say, just to try to bring closure to this, Mr. Hunger, is this isn't my opinion, this isn't my loosely thought-out suggestion to partner with county public health. This is supported and actually highly encouraged by the Centers for Disease Control, the California Department of Public Health, and Dr. Bornstein, our local public health director, all from the federal to the state to the local level, medical experts, including the top universities in the world, are all saying the same thing, that this vaccine prevents serious illness and death. And it, it's a serious, serious situation that we should not take lightly, and we're seeing it across our country reemerge largely because of the lack of vaccinations going on. And, and there's a hesitancy there, and I get that. But I just want to say that we are, we as a district have followed the guidance from the medical experts in this country from the beginning, so we are not veered from that. And all we're doing here in this particular instance is we are providing the opportunity by, by partnering with county public health. Dr. Bornstein met with the superintendents a couple of weeks ago and encouraged us to partner with them, and we are. And, and that's what we're doing. It's not you have to. It's available for you. And we, we support that effort, and that's really what I wanted to say.
Okay, thanks, Mark.
Yes, thanks, Chris, and I apologize, and I know you're trying to manage the meeting. I apologize for interrupting. I apologize for the continued discussion of this. However, I don't think I can leave Centers for an Education, and I just can't leave misinformation on the table. First of all, the highly respected WebMD clearly states that it's not gene therapy. And I just want to point out that over the months since this has happened, the American Pediatrics Council Association has been quoted and quoted and quoted as somehow being against vaccinations. On May 21st, 2021, they and the CDC both recommended vaccinations for children. And so as we go on, I think it's important to keep the facts straight. Clearly, this is not gene therapy, and clearly the top agencies are recommending vaccinations for children. And I appreciate the time, Chris. Thank you.
You're welcome. Eve?
I would ask that you withdraw the label of misinformation, because there are a number of scientific experts. There is not a consensus in the medical or the science community about this, such as the former vice president and head of vaccines at Pfizer, Dr. Yedon. He has issued warnings about this, and I could name others, but no need to go there. I just am saying that we need to have a balanced position on things that are this important that relate to the health of future generations. And so I ask that people not just dismiss information just because the CDC or the WHO or whoever, whatever authority you want to refer to says one way, but I ask that everybody look at alternative information and get a more balanced approach, rather just falling in lockstep with what we're being told.
I'm going to go at Mark and Ellen, but, but before we do, I just want to point out to everybody, we, as this group discussion is, is making very clear, there are, there are opinions on, on both sides as to the efficacy of vaccines and the appropriateness of them. And I, I believe that, that this, that this discussion is the discussion that's being carried out throughout the United States. We, we can continue to, to have this discussion. I'm not sure we're going to change any minds, but I, but I'm seeing, well, I, I'm just going to stop there and let, we'll go to Mark and then Ellen. And, and if, if the board wishes to continue to have this discussion, that's fine. I'm not sure that we're going to change any minds on this. And, and I, for one, support the districts moving forward, and then we'll, you know, we'll just leave, I'll leave it at that. Mark?
I'll step back. Thanks, Chris, for the opportunity.
Ellen?
Yeah, I'm not seeking to change anybody's mind here. I think people are fairly entrenched at this point. But I would simply like to point out that, as in many things with public education, parental choice prevails. So we are not, as a district, forcing anyone to do anything. We are making opportunities available to students and their families. And just as we do with our course offerings, just as we do with various opportunities for dual immersion program, for Pacific Beach Continuation High School, for all of our extracurricular activities. This is a matter of families having an opportunity to make a choice that suits them the best. I fully support our making those opportunities available for parents and families to avail themselves of or not. It is their choice. So, and I appreciate that we are doing that. Thank you.
All right, I'm not seeing any other hands up. Let's move on to 4.03, Measure D Update. Mr. Pinkerton? All right, I'm not seeing any other hands up. Let's move on to 4.03, Measure D update. Mr. Pinkerton?
Yeah, so just to update the board really quick, at Morro Bay High, of course, we're moving into the B building, the former office, new classroom building. And so getting the furniture set up, staff set up in those rooms. Looks beautiful. If you've had a chance to go by, we'll have to set up some visits in the fall, definitely to walk through. I'd like to wait until we get all the furniture and so you can kind of see a finished product, if that's okay. And the quad is, is done, looks great. And so they've planted some trees. And I'll have to do a before and after picture for you to, to get the full scale of how, how much nicer this is going to be for kids right on campus as well as staff. So very excited about the progress that's being made there. At Slow High, we ran into some issues in the center of the 100 building. And so as we were up at the top of the building, you know, we had discussed putting the library student support center at the top, right? So it looked over, it would be a great spot. Unfortunately, after we went through, we found that there were some structural issues with the floor. So the floor is not strong enough to hold the stacks and, and having that room there. So we've had to kind of make a, a change and move the library student services center over to the northern section of the building. It'll still be beautiful, great place. There's some pros to it. And I'll, I'll update the board and show you some more pictures and, and things about this at our, our next board study session on Measure D, to kind of update you. But, you know, in light of what happened in Florida, it was, you know, this, when this came up and we looked at some different options to try to make it work, and it still wasn't going to be, you know, up to standard, we, we really had no choice but to, to make this move. And so instead of, you know, we'll move the student support center, it's still beautiful, great location. Going to use the dome as, as part of the inside there. And then we'll just basically move the classrooms up to the, to the top portion of that building. So again, I'll, I'll review all of that with you and, and kind of give you an update. So those are some of the positives. There is some, there is going to be access issues at Slow High. And so especially right in, at the beginning of the school year. So we'll have maps, sharing everything with students. But they're finishing up the quad area at the southern end of the new science building there of the 100. And so there's still some work being done that will, will happen probably over the first month of school. So, you know, we're going to have some alternate paths, kind of move kids around. And, and so we'll, you know, we'll, we'll do our best to mitigate whatever we can. But just so you know, it, it will, it is going to be a pain probably for the first month of school as we get through this. And what we found in the past, just so the board knows, the students are fantastic, right? They, they deal with it, they get through it, we'll make this work, we'll get through it as we, we always have. And we'll do whatever we can. So the good news is, it's, you know, it's not the rainy season. So, you know, things like that, we should be able to, to make this work. And we'll be there day one, kind of watching the entrance exit. But the new science classrooms and the new classrooms in the South 100 as well, we'll walk you through. And it, it just, it looks beautiful. You know, they're great, brand new classrooms for kids and for staff. So really looking forward to showing you that as well.
And we'll be having a Measure D meeting, study session next Thursday, I believe, a week from this coming Thursday. And I know that you'll give us more information on that. You know, Ryan, it just occurs to me that we're just basically moving the heavy reading downstairs. You know, we need to, to lighten up, maybe we're getting, that's a joke. I'm sorry, a joke that obviously fell flat. Okay, thank you. Any questions from Mr. Pinkerton right now?
I'll also give the board a budget update at that point as too, because we have the unedited actuals from last year.
Let's move on to item number 5.01, a public hearing to consider the scope, purpose, and other factors related to adoption of independent study policy. This will be a public hearing. I'm going to let Mrs. Frost introduce this, then we'll go to the public hearing. Mrs. Frost?
Thank you very much. Yes, very happy to be here to talk about our independent study board policy, public hearing. With me as well is Josh Whiteside, District Attorney, who has expertise in this area. We're going to start with Mr. Whiteside giving us background on the new legislation that has led to the change that we're going to be talking about today. Mr. Whiteside?
Thank you. It's a good morning, board and the community. So I'm here to talk about AB 130. And Assembly Bill 130 was part of the budget bill that was passed by the legislature. This actually became law effective immediately on July 12th, so just a few weeks ago. And it requires for this school year only, school districts and county offices of education are required to offer an independent study program to meet the educational needs of students. The district previously only had a short-term independent study program. And the current reading of the existing board policy, 6158, on independent study, sets a maximum period of time for independent study to be 20 school days. So this new law essentially mandates that there be an expansion of that independent study time period from simply a short-term option to having to do a long-term option, while giving the district only about a month to prepare for that. And so as an alternative to developing its own independent study program, a school district is permitted under Assembly Bill 130 to contract with the county office of education to have them provide those services or to enter into inter-district transfer agreements with another school district to satisfy those requirements. These new changes essentially require, in order to be eligible for apportionment for independent study, that the school district update its policy and written agreements for independent study to make significant programmatic revisions. Some of the major changes including, include that from transitional kindergarten up to grade three, that there has to be a plan to provide opportunities for daily synchronous instruction, very similar to what was allowed and is no longer authorized last year through distance learning. And for grades four through eight, the plan has to provide opportunities for both daily live interaction and at least weekly synchronous instruction. And for grades nine to 12, a plan to provide opportunities for synchronous instruction at least weekly. Pupils' interactions with that live interaction and synchronous instruction has to be documented. And there has to be confirmation that the student has internet connectivity. Otherwise, the district will need to provide adequate connectivity or devices to the student. And then also, this requirement includes that the plan must allow for students to be promptly transitioned back to in-person instruction upon request. And actually, that timeline is very short. It's five instructional days of a parent or guardian's request to do so. So this definitely creates a bit of, of a difficulty in terms of logistics and managing, you know, where a kid's going to end up, if there's going to be this back and forth for independent study. Now luckily, there is some leeway at the beginning of this school year. So school districts have 30 days after the first day of instruction to obtain written, signed signatures to those agreements with students to do independent study. However, with stu, for students with exceptional needs or a specialized population, their IEPs must still specifically provide for independent study before the student can begin in the, in that program. So those are the requirements that are laid out under Assembly Bill 130. The guidance that is coming from CDE, they held a webinar last Thursday to kind of talk through some of the specific questions that districts had regarding developing these programs. A lot of districts are really struggling with this because there's a lot of changes and not a lot of time to implement them. And so the districts that are really advantaged from this are those that already had long-term independent study programs, because they're kind of able to better adapt to the changing requirements and changing needs here. For a district like this that doesn't have that, it certainly would be a tall task for the district to develop and implement that in a month's time. But it sounds like from Diane Frost, and she'll talk about it sooner and just soon, in just a couple of minutes here, about what the district's plan is regarding that. Ultimately, here, we're still waiting on CDE to provide updated templates agreements. And they're going to be providing checklists, and they're going to be providing an additional webinar, I believe, this Thursday, later this week, to go over some of the more nuanced questions that still remain. They'll also be putting out an FAQ at some point, but they have not yet specified a timeline. So this current board policy that's going to be presented before the board and is the subject of this public hearing is to share the scope and the purpose related to this board policy, why it's necessary, allow for the public to give input and feedback to it. And notably, the board policy is, it's 6158.1, which, because this is a one-year program, it would allow the district to essentially easily rescind this policy next year without having to undo or untangle its existing independent study policy, which is under 6158. So that's why it was designed as a point one. And there will be further regulations and an administrative regulation that will accompany this board policy that, following the further guidance from CDE prior to the start of the school year, the administrators at the district will be promulgating and sharing with the board and the public. So first, I'll, I'll turn it to Diane, and then we can open it up to board questions.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Whiteside gave you the most important details of AB 130. So I'll just give you a few more for your understanding. First of all, we want every one of our students to return to school. We hope that we don't have to provide independent study for a great number of students. We want them on our campuses. But we do know that there are families and we do know that there are students who are going to choose independent study for any of a number of reasons. And like Mr. Whiteside said, a month's time putting together a robust, effective independent study program was just a little, too little for us to be comfortable with. We have partnered in the past, as Mr. Whiteside says, in San Luis Coastal, we have five to 20 days independent study, short-term. We do not have long-term. In the past, we've partnered with other districts very successfully. And we will be doing that under AB 130 as well. We've partnered with Templeton in the past, as I said, successfully. And we are adding other districts to our partnership. Those districts will be following the details of AB 130 that Mr. Whiteside described to you, the synchronous, the live interaction, all of that. And we will be checking to ensure that that is available for our students. And another detail that Mr. Whiteside mentioned to you, and I think it's important to hear again, is that any parent at any time during this year can change their mind. And we would have them back in a San Luis Coastal class within five days. One thing that I'm not sure Mr. Whiteside described, and I think this is important for our board and the public to know, is that AB 130 gave independent study programs a little bit more teeth. We will be looking very closely at the participation of the students, the progress of the students, the success of the students, to ensure that that is an appropriate placement. Should the receiving district find that a student is not progressing, San Luis Coastal will be contacted and we will work with those families and that student to either make that placement appropriate or find another placement that is more effective for the kiddo. We have a survey going out to our families today where they're, we are asking them to let us know if they would like to explore independent study. We've sent out much information, but for those families who need more information, they will be meeting with their site principal and will receive that information. And then we can move forward with independent study or get them back into one of our classrooms.
You know, I, I'm wondering, I see we have a couple of board questions. I think what I'd like to do, if it's okay with the board, I think we need to open up the public hearing. So we're, well, what I'd like to do at this point is open the public hearing. And then if we could save the board questions for item 7.01, which is the, which is the board policy that will be asked to approve based on this public hearing. Is everybody okay with that? Does that work for everyone? Eve, it does not work for you. So Eve, you wish to speak now? You're muted, Eve.
Okay, I have one question about, I understand that a month's time is too little time to develop a robust program. But it is, it could be started to be developed, could it not? And then fleshing out as time goes on, because we don't know how long these, these lockdowns, these mask requirements, all of that is going to be with us. We see no end in sight right now. So there are a number of parents who do fit into, you know, they've determined according to AB 130 that the, it's against their children's health to wear a mask, for example, and other reasons too. So I'm just wondering if we can use the vac COVID funds to start to develop that robust program, which will be, we have all year to get it going.
Well, like I said, this is a public hearing. And so I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing to the public. And then, Mrs. Frost, if you can wait until after the public hearing, and then the board will have an opportunity. Actually, after the public hearing, we'll go to 7.01. There'll be another opportunity for the public to weigh in, because that's a separate item from the public hearing. And then the board will have an opportunity to ask questions before we're asked to take a vote. So at this point, I'm going to open the public hearing. Let me just get my watch so I can do the 203 minutes. Right now, I see I have three people. The first person I'd like to ask to come on is Bria DeCicchio. I hope, I'm sorry if I butchered your last name. Bria, are you there?
I am. Thank you for the time.
Bria, your three minutes is beginning right now?
Okay, thank you. I just want to thank you all for your time and work on behalf of our students. I have a third grader at Hawthorne Elementary and just considering weighing the remote learning program and having her back in school. And after speaking with the school office, I was really comfortable and really excited about sending her back. One piece that was a little bit unnerving to me was just that the kids will be sitting on the benches during lunchtime. And my concern there is that Hawthorne has such a beautiful, big, open field. And I could really see the kids being so much safer on like a blanket or just sitting on the grass and being able to spread out where they have their mask sprays. And, you know, with, with Delta being twice as transmissive as the original strain, I, it's, I know it's not practical to keep them six or 12 feet apart all the time. As someone who's practiced playdates, I totally understand that. But I think giving them the opportunity to be on the grass versus being on a lunch bench is a lot safer. And to me, if a little change like that could be made, and I would personally feel a lot more confident sending her back at school, knowing that her health was a little bit more protected in that way. And then also, I was understanding that there wasn't like a formal process to encourage the kids to help wash their hands. And I, again, I'm so sympathetic to teachers that it's really difficult to bring in, you know, 15, 20 kids in a classroom and have them all wash their hands. But I'm wondering even like, you know, hose and soap or like a basic hand washing station on the way into it. I'm happy to pack sanitizing things or help with donations in whatever way I can. But I think, you know, we know now that hand washing, masks, distance, outdoors, those are all things that we can do to protect our kids and get them back in a group learning setting, which I think everybody really wants. So I'm just wondering, and I'm also encouraging that, you know, let us parents know how we can help with those things that we can take some of the burden off the school and off the individual teachers on those activities.
Thank you very much. The next person is Jen Green, Green, Greenwicher, I believe. Jen, are you there?
I am, yes. Hi there.
Jen, hold on just a second. Your three minutes is beginning right now?
All right, thank you. My name's Jennifer Greenwicher. I'm the chapter chair for our county chapter of Moms for Liberty. It's a national organization that is for returning the power to the parents over the health and education for their children. We're a nonprofit, nonpartisan group. I'm listening to your meeting and, and I want to bring a few things to your attention. One is, you're talking about having the option or the recommendation that children do independent studies, which sounds to me very much like distance learning for students who are unable to wear a mask. And for many students, that's not going to be an option. So you're required to provide a reasonable option. If that's not reasonable, I encourage you to come up with some other options. Because it's, your, your own stats have shown that, that that program did not work for many children, especially your younger age group, which is not able to get a vaccine at this time. I'm grateful for Ms. Dobler Drew bringing up that there are a number of studies that are peer reviewed that are showing that this vaccine is not safe for children to take. And if you're going to be having going to be having a vaccine clinic on your campus, we certainly hope that you are going to provide full information on both sides of that issue so that parents who are coming can make an informed decision, because you are required by law to provide informed consent. Another matter that I'd like to discuss with you is you obviously have parents on both sides of this issue, some that are very concerned about the health of their children as it in regards to COVID, and others who are very concerned about the health of their children wearing a mask. The CDC provides you with a large list of conditions that would prevent somebody from being able to wear a mask, and that provides them with a mask exemption. In none of the CDC guidance to schools, does it mention a requirement for a doctor's note? This should be an option and a way for you to provide parental choice for them to indicate to you what the, the condition is that their child has that gives them a mask exemption. To require a doctor's note for some of your population is unreasonable. Many of them don't have easy access or can afford to go to the doctor to get a doctor's note. And you have children that have seizure disorders, asthma, panic disorder. With panic disorder, it doesn't need to be severe enough to require medication. Those families would not be taking their child to the doctor, and there would be.
Thank you, your three, thank you, Mrs. Greniger. Your three minutes are up. The next person to speak is Nicole Dorfman. Mrs. Dorfman, are you there?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm trying to hear myself on video.
Hold on.
There we go.
Okay, your three minutes is beginning now.
Okay. Thank you so much for being here, board members, superintendent, all the staff. I know you guys have been working hard and having to deal with people with all sorts of different issues and concerns. I want to echo what the last speaker said, Ms. Greniger, that there are many students who vary, for various reasons, cannot wear masks. My high schooler is one of those students who will not be returning to school if it requires him to wear a mask full time. I have sent studies to this board on a few occasions showing the documented, scientifically reported harms of mask wearing in children. I have repeatedly asked for the science and the studies being used to show that it is in fact, safe. I have not received any studies from this board to this day, showing in fact, that what you are requiring for children is safe for them. So I'm going to again, repeat that request. I also appreciate what Ms. Dobler Drew said, bringing attention to the fact that these vaccines are very harmful to a certain percentage of the population, more so a greater population of young, healthy people are having adverse effects. And this is documented, and I'm happy to send this to you. There is a warning now about myocarditis, which is heart inflammation for young people. We have no idea the long term effects of that. So that's just out there. We all know this is a brand new thing we're dealing with. But looking to independent study, one question I have for you is regarding athletics. That is the one thing that my son very much, much wants to continue to participate in. I encourage that, and it's healthy for him. He's on the water polo team at, at Morro Bay High and would like to continue with that. So I was very heartened to learn about this independent study program. Otherwise, we would be homeschooling him. I do have a private homeschool set up. So that my question is, is regarding athletics. So if at some point the board could address that, if these children who are in independent studies can continue with their athletics at their school. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Pardon me. We have Stacy Emick, please. Stacy?
Hi. Hi.
You know, you're, you're kind of breaking up.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm in an office that doesn't have great reception. Is that better?
Yes. And your three minutes begins now.
Thank you. So I am a graduate of Sohigh, and I loved my school. I think that you guys are doing a good job of trying to mitigate all of this very hard stuff. I am also with Moms for Liberty, and we really believe that it's up to the parents to understand and make sure that their kids are as safe as possible. It's not the school's job. I understand that you guys are under CDC guidelines and Peggy Bornstein's guidelines, and those are just guidelines. Okay. And we can do our own research. We need to be able to have the freedom to have our kids be in school. They've been out for a year and a half. My fiance is a Hispanic man who his family are, some of them still not speaking great English. There's no way to learn it when you can't see people's lips. And you're not providing a fair opportunity for these kids to do that. So this goes further than just COVID, which by the way, has such low percentages in our area that really that should not be your primary concern right now. And for you guys to be taking such a huge stance on vaccines and masks and everything, it's, it's out of context with what's actually happening around here. So I hope that you'll get back on board with just making sure our kids get a fair and equal opportunity for education that is consistent with other kids across the nation. And thank you for doing your jobs.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board? Mrs. Dawson? Okay, I'm going to, there is no one else. I'm going to close the public hearing. Let's move on to item seven point zero one. This is the proposed revision to board policy four zero three zero. I'm sorry, this is six zero one, proposed board policy, independent study to implement Assembly Bill one thirty. This is a first reading. Mrs. Frost?
Thank you. I've actually asked Mr. Whiteside to give you details about the actual board policy.
Thank you. So just to mirror what we mentioned with the, with the public hearing, this requirement that's been created by Assembly Bill one thirty, it became effective immediately and requires the district to pass a policy related to these new measures that are required under Assembly Bill one thirty prior to the beginning of the school year, the first instructional day, rather. So this policy is being presented now for your consideration. Again, the district staff will be working on the regulations in light of upcoming CDE guidance and FAQs to really flesh out more of the details about this program. But importantly, as Diane Frost already mentioned, it's the intent, at least at this moment, right now, that it's likely that this will be dealt with, through, with independent study through interdistrict transfer agreements. That's an option. And then, and there still is flexibility in this policy that the district can provide its own program if that's of interest. But ultimately, you know, we're, we're on a, on a tight deadline here to figure out all the different requirements under this law. And so that's, this policy is really just a starting point. And then the administrative regulation will hammer out the details, and then you'll be looking at your administrative staff to develop and implement the protocols for signing up for independent study as well as figuring out where kids will be placed, should they desire to utilize this.
I'll go to, I'll bring it back to the board for questions for, actually, I'll see, Mrs. Frost, do you have anything you'd like to add to this?
I don't think so at this point. Thank you.
Okay, I'll take it back to the board for questions, and then I'll open it up for public comment. I think Mrs. Dobler Drew, Ms. Dobler Drew, you had a question before?
Oh.
I think you're muted.
No, I'm just not answering. I'm not, I just wasn't answering on your, your time schedule. Sorry. The, the question, should I repeat it, is that can we not start the development of the district's own answer to this, rather than having the interdistrict transfers? That, that would be something that I'm sure, I've heard from a lot of parents that they want to see in the district, not having to transfer outside the district. That's upsetting to a number of families.
Well, I, I can tell you what I said earlier. We have had partnerships in the past. We have had San Luis Coastal students go to Templeton in particular successfully. So we, we are happy with the partnerships. We've put a lot of effort into ensuring that our new partnerships meet AB one thirty. In terms of pulling together a, an independent study program, San Luis Coastal is, I think, known for our programs in place, the effectiveness, the challenge, and we wouldn't want to put together an independent study program that is any less. I do believe that it would take quite a bit of time to put together an independent study program. I'd also say that I think it's important for us to get our survey results back from our parents and see really how many are going to be asking for this opportunity that does take them to another district. And then I do think I want to repeat one more time. If a parent makes a decision that independent study in the other district is not working, they immediately come back to San Luis Coastal. Five days and they are back at their homeschool. So that's, that's comforting, I hope, to our families as well.
Mr. Buckman? Mark, you're still muted.
Yeah, I'm working. Thank you, Chris. Thanks for the heads up on that. Several questions. I would like to support Ms. Dobler Drew's request for exploration of an independent study program that's, that could handle what we're going to be allowing other districts to do for us. But I understand that that's going to take a, a long period of time. And I think I think that, that it's something, what I don't want to do is lose a few of the benefits that have come out of the pandemic. And one of those that I see as having an independent study program, virtual, a larger and, and more robust program for students that, that desire it. It's, it's something that we learned. It did work for many students, and it may be a viable option for some of those students. So that's my comments right now, Chris. I have others, but I see the floor to my fellow board members.
Is there, why, why don't you go on, go ahead, Mark, because you do have the floor right now?
Okay. Diane, I really appreciate your comments. I am wondering several things. What, what kind of control do we as a board have, or the district have, or you as a staff have on the, the educational, the curriculum, whether it's, whether we can influence that at all, if it's an outside district? You talked about monitoring the progress of students and how important that is. Will we, will we have some say in that? Do we know what those, what those steps will be? And I guess I would make this suggestion or request, Chris, and whether the, my fellow board members would be interested, since we're going to be going into this, this new mode, whether we could have as a board, some kind of review or some kind of report in like, you know, six months, three months, that we can see how effective it is for our students. So two things, two takeaways from this, I think, are questions about the quality and control of the program, possible review that's coming up, and the development of a program in the future.
Okay, I can answer a couple of those questions for you, Mr. Buckman. In terms of the content, AB one thirty specifically requires that the instructional content is aligned to grade level standards. It also specifies that for high school, they have to have access to courses that lead to graduation and are creditable under A through G requirements. So in terms of the contract, or the content, excuse me, AB one thirty, really what does detail that for the district who is offering the independent study? For San Luis Coastal, in our conversations with the districts we are partnering with, we are asking how they are implementing this. We are going specifically over the details to make sure that we have a common understanding of what should be offered to our students. In terms of progress, AB one thirty really details that out as well. How many sessions the children may miss before a conference has to be held, what progress looks like. In my conversations with the districts that we are partnering with, I have, I'm talked through the process of when and how San Luis Coastal will be contacted when a student is not progressing, and who our content or contact will be. So those kind of details are important. I'm glad you brought that up, and it's something that we have considered in our planning.
Well, let's see, I think Mark, and then after Mark, Evelyn has her hand up?
I'll see Evelyn, please.
Okay, Evelyn?
Thank you, Mr. Buckman. Okay, I'm, I am muted. Can you hear me now?
You're unmuted.
Okay. So I, a couple of questions, Diane, that I have. One is, do we have any information on the interfacing? I know, understand there, there's essential, you know, the essential or the standards by grade level. Any interfacing between actual materials that are being used, like our district versus other district? I mean, one thought I had in my mind is students returning, they may have standards, but they may be unfamiliar with some of the materials. That's one thing. The other question I have is, will parents, before they make that decision, have the opportunity to preview the program or materials? I don't know, you know, how that works. What do you?
So I can, I, I can answer that for you. In terms of parents and previewing, the district who will receive our students is required to have a conference with the parents, and they go over the contract. So the independent, independent study contract that will include the engagement strategies, the requirements, that kind of thing. And I'm certain that they can include the, you know, the curricular content as well. Your question about materials, the, the receiving school district will be using the materials that are adopted by that school district. You are right in that their pacing may be slightly different than San Luis Coastal. So if a child comes back mid-year, we would have to take that into account, make sure that the receiving teacher knows exactly where this child is. For our process, when a family makes a decision that they'd like to come back to San Luis Coastal, the first contact will be with the site principal, and they can walk through all of those details to ensure that as seamless a change as possible happens for the kiddo.
Okay, thank you.
Let's see. Eve, you have your hand up?
Yeah. So the question is, I'm noticing a reluctance to, at least in this meeting, maybe not later, after it's been looked into, but a reluctance to entertain the idea that San Luis Coastal could develop its own independent study program. I'm just wondering, it just occurred to me, is it because we don't want to encourage the independent program and want to have everybody in school? Because I would like to see, and you know, another board member sort of seconded it, looking into starting our own. This is not, again, we're at a place where past history is no guarantee of future performance. Okay, so we don't know what's going to happen. Like, so thank you for the suggestion, Mr. Buckman, about the, and Ms. Frame, I think, for follow-up studies to see how they're doing with the independent study and keeping close tabs on their progress. But I just kind of wondered, you know, I like to have nothing, or I like to reveal everything about my viewpoint. And so I just wondered if maybe we're just not wanting to encourage the independent study, and that's why I'm not hearing a willingness to consider developing one here in the district.
I guess I would. I guess I would comment that you're right. We want our students to come back in person. There's no doubt about it. That's our primary focus, that they are in person with their teachers, with the other students at their school. There are other details to consider when you are putting together a robust independent study program. Staffing is critical. And when you talk about staffing a program with legislation that started on July 12th, it's a very difficult time to staff, as well as some of the other details that we've talked about. I will tell you that independent study is not a program that we could start by the beginning of the year. So now you're talking about children going to our trusted partners and then coming back to our independent study program. If we were able to do that, which would be another change. And then, as I said, hopefully we'd like them to change again and come back to our school. So there are a number of things, but I don't want us to forget the staffing piece as well.
And I can comment on just what other districts are doing across the state, just to give you some perspective on what's happening. Most districts that have not had a long-term form of independent study are typically contracting to start their program with an outside service provider rather than their own staff. If they're not utilizing this inter-district transfer option.
Thanks. Anybody else? Because I have a couple of questions. Mark, do you want to go ahead and then I'll, Mark and then Ellen?
So Diane, I, if this turned out to be a popular option for parents and students, would the district or will the district be looking at creating a program sometime in the future?
I wouldn't want to commit to anything, but it is possible that we could look at an independent study program sometime in the future.
Thank you.
Okay, Ellen? And then Evelyn?
Thanks. I just wanted to indicate that it's my understanding, this is in response to a specific need that has arisen at this time, hence the temporary, proposed temporary nature of this policy. I certainly have always supported and have ongoing support of examining other beneficial ways of serving our students. However, I personally, as one trustee, believe that at this time, when we are still having so many balls in the air that we, I support what we're doing here. I will be interested in data that is collected throughout the process. But, and then at a future time when we are not operating under these particular circumstances, examining that data in terms of perhaps providing this on an ongoing basis. I look forward to receiving and looking at data as we do this at this time, just for the specific population of students. But again, we don't know how many, we don't even know how many kids are going to want to take advantage of this. So at this time, I support, I just want to make it clear that I support what we're doing under these circumstances at this time with the ongoing oversight of administration, staff and the board. Thank you.
Evelyn?
Yeah, Diane, Mrs. Frost, I wanted to ask, do we, I know we're sending out the survey to parents to get some indication of what their needs are. Do we have any indication? I'm just curious of enrollment right now. Do we have, you know, I'm thinking of our younger kids. Have we, are we having a drop in enrollment? And, you know, was that, did that happen last year? Is it continuing this year? Do we have any indication? I'm just thinking.
I'm very sorry. I wonder if Mr. Pinkerton could answer that question. I don't have those details.
Yeah, we purposely less class sizes pretty low, Mrs. Frame, you know, across the district, right? Because, you know, we want to try to keep spacing, keeping all those safety protocols that we started last year in place, right? Mainly for quarantining issues potentially, right? We want to make sure kids are able to stay in class if there is a case. So I would say we're pretty normal in terms of overall number, like kindergarten enrollment. We've seen an uptick in TK actually over the past month. And so, you know, we haven't seen a drop. If anything, a lot of the kids that maybe had left at the end of last year are back now at school sites, have checked back in or getting back into classes. We've seen a little bit of growth in classes, but we've tried to keep class sizes down, you know, as best we can, primarily in the elementary grades.
Thank you. I think Dr. Prater has something to add.
Yes, I do. To that point, Mrs. Frame, it's interesting. After our letter went out to our parents on Friday, I went out yesterday after, in the afternoon and walked a few of our elementary sites. And at both Sinseimer and Hawthorne, I found that we're getting parents coming in. At Sinseimer in particular, there were eight, eight new enrollees just yesterday. And at Hawthorne, I think there were six. So parents are now seeing that, you know, we have made that clear declaration that we are coming back. We are, you know, focused on keeping people as safe as we can. And that there's, I think, a reasonableness to the mask requirement, which says, look, you know, you wear it when you're in the inside, but at no given point will you need to wear your mask more than two hours at a time that you will have a break. And so there will be reasonable opportunities for kids to take their masks off and for staff as well when they go outside. And so I believe that parents at the elementary levels in particular are, you know, like one of the parents, I believe, Ms., I butchered this name, but Disasiko about the Hawthorne lunch opportunity to go out on the field and eat your lunch on a blanket or on the grass makes great sense to me. And those are the little compromises that we can make without, without any real issues. And so I think every one of our schools will begin to kind of make it their own and make it reasonable as best as we can. But our focus, without question, is trying to get eyes on kids, trying to get our kids back into school so that we can engage them again. And recognizing that there are some of these safety measures that we have to adhere to. But that is striking the balance. And for me, I do believe to Ms. Dobler Drew's point, I do believe that you're sensing a reluctance for us to build an independent study program as of July, when we first heard of the law. Because leading up to July, we had heard about independent study. But they kept changing the rules on us, which are significant from a staffing perspective. And so without knowing what the final decision was until July, it becomes quite significant when, when those new laws and those new requirements are heavy requirements from a personnel standpoint. And so for an end, it looks as though it's a one-year requirement. So while we do have those COVID dollars, what, what the decision point would look like for us is that many of our teachers sign contracts in the spring for the following year. Well, the problem is, is even in San Luis Coastal, we're having a difficult time staffing our schools because teachers have already signed contracts in their districts who would normally come to us. And so it is a real struggle to get high-quality teachers in the classrooms given this, the teacher shortage and given the new laws that the legislature just put in place on independent study. And it's not that I don't want to support our families that are choosing independent study. It's not, that is absolutely not something that I am missing. What I, what I'm concerned about is the way in which this came upon districts at the last minute within an environment where the California Department of Ed is clear, they want kids back in school. We want kids back in school. And then now we need to decipher how many families want to have their kids in an independent study program. But in the meantime, we start school in three weeks. So for me, I think we can explore an independent study program of our own once we determine how many parents really want that option and what other districts are able to, to provide us along with the quality of program. So there's quite a lot of nuance to this. I can tell you right now, we're still hiring teachers for our-
You're kind of breaking up there.
Oh, am I? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's better.
Okay, what I can tell you is there's quite a lot of nuance and, and to this. And we're still struggling to hire teachers for in-person in the classroom. And that's my top priority right now. And, and then without watering down another program and having both in-person and independent study programs suffer, I'd like to do this, the in-person component really well, knowing that we've already reached out to outside partners for the independent study program in the immediate term. And once we get a better idea, a better handle of how many parents want the independent study model, then we can dive in a little deeper and see what we can discover in terms of the ability to staff it with high-quality teachers. And that would be my position on that.
Okay. Eve, Mark, then Catherine?
Okay. I appreciate your remarks, Mr. Prater, Dr. Prater. And I also wonder, there are some parents that think that the alternative offered in this independent study might be virtual Zoom. And I believe that that is not one of the options really, right? I'd like to clarify what the options could be for those parents listening and concerned about that.
So I think Mr. Whiteside and I could probably answer that. AB 130 does require some live interaction at some grade levels and synchronous, right? So not just videos, but synchronous where a teacher is on the video with the kiddo. So that is required under AB 130 and we would expect that from our partnering districts. Mr. Whiteside, did I miss anything?
Well, yeah, just to clarify, so distance learning was only authorized last year under Senate Bill 98. And that authorization expired as of June 30th of this year. So we basically are resorting back to our pre-pandemic options for education. And, and so that's really where we're at. It's pretty much our existing in-person program or our existing independent study program. And the district here, of course, only had a short-term independent study program.
So there would be some internet, some Zoom interaction. I read the law, but I don't have it in front of me right now. That part of it. So the synchronous means contact with a teacher, but so in-person contact with the teacher. But the other component would be a video, so like a Zoom.
No, Ms. Dobler Drew, I think what synchronous means is you can have synchronous instruction on Zoom. It means that you're live with the teacher, but you're still virtual. The, the video is still on Zoom or still on your, your, your computer, but it's not live. So I think when you, when you talk about independent study, to my understanding, Josh, you know, check me on this if I'm wrong, independent study is still largely, in this environment, considered to be a Zoom environment.
Yes, I mean, independent study traditionally has been, you know, a lot of work is being done by the student at home and then they're checking in with their teacher. And, you know, that might be on a somewhat regular basis, but, you know, it's really driven by the students and completing that work. And they're doing that overtime from home. That was how traditional independent study was in the past. AB 130 changes that a little bit to now require a little bit more virtual instruction component now that we have the access to tablets and other devices to be able to connect easier with our students.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
Okay, I think, I think Mark and then Catherine?
Thanks, Chris. So I may have missed this, but I just, we do have a good independent study program. It is recognized statewide. So we will still maintain the short-term independent study programs, Ms. Frost?
Yes, we will still maintain the short-term independent study programs. Good question.
And then the second question I have is, we're doing the survey. I'm sure we're doing it in dual language or at least offering it in dual language, but sometimes you've done surveys and gotten not a hundred percent response. So in the past, do we know what our server response rate is? Are we going to be sure we're reading everybody that may be interested in this?
You know, it's a really good question. We will, like I said, the survey is going out first time today. And it would be wise for us to send it out a second time to make sure that we have given ample opportunity for our parents to tell us if they want independent study. Our sites are also registering their students. So they will be looking at students who they know attend their schools, who they know are still in their residence. And when they don't have contact, they will reach out so that we can assure that we have answers from our, our population. Thank you. Good question again.
Catherine? And then Marilyn?
I just want to make a little bit of a plea to parents about taking into consideration that their students' education in our school district is not simply in the classroom. But, but it is enhanced by that classroom experience. And so by, if you, if it were me and I was put in a position of having to make this decision about having my child homeschooled right now, I would, I would seriously take into consideration the advantage to having their, their child in the classroom with their cohorts, with the teachers, interacting and having the kind of school experience we want all of our students to have. So I just felt like I wanted to share that as a, as a parent of two sons who went through this school system and, and really appreciate the, the in-person relationship that these students had with each of their individual teachers and how I'm not a hundred percent sure that I would be confident that my students, under my supervision at home, would have that same experience.
Thank you. Marilyn?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. First one, I guess, is that one of the parents inquired about whether if their child was in independent study, if they would, if that would preclude them from participating in athletics and other activities. And I, and so I would like to have the answer to that question if we can get it. And then I'm wondering, when we talk about, when we look at the possibility of investing a lot of effort in creating our own program, our own independent study program, if we look at what has happened historically, I realize that this is COVID-driven at this point. But historically, I, I would suspect that we have students who are in our schools. We have students who are homeschooled. Students who attend charters or private schools. And then we have students who attend independent study. I would suspect that the majority of students who attend independent study are secondary students and that the number is actually quite low in a historical context. So I wonder if it is, given the fact that we have so much learning loss over COVID and we are investing so much, so many financial resources and, and human capital in trying to help students in the coming year recover from that learning loss, I wonder if it is a good investment of our staff and funds to really investigate our own. to really investigate our own, um, independent study program. Given that, that pre-COVID, I suspect the number was really very low. Could someone supply that number? Give me a horseback guess or any information?
Marilyn, I can answer a couple of your questions or at least tell you, um, the path that we'll go down. In terms of athletics, I think there's still some, um, some questions to be answered. Um, CIF will definitely have to weigh in on, um, children on independent study, participating on their school teams. The next thing that we have to understand is that these children on independent study will be transferring to another district. So would the athletics be offered through that district that they are participating in, um, independent study in? So those are some things that we can look at. Um, in terms of, um, independent study, I think you're right on the numbers. Um, in our, um, partnership with Templeton, we definitely have more high school level students participating in independent study than we do have, um, elementary students. I'm not sure I caught the last one and I do want to give, uh, Mr. Whiteside an opportunity to pipe in. If I'm wrong at all about athletics and independent study based on his understanding.
I think you hit it spot on. And they, they, this would be through an inter-district transfer agreement. So it'd be treated, in my, in my opinion, you know, uh, absent some further direction or guidance or change in policy from CIF. It would be treated just like in past years when a student, it goes on an inter-district transfer to another district. They would be essentially the responsibility of that district. Um, and they would be participating in the services and athletics of that district. Now we'll wait to see what CIF has to say if there's some, um, caveats that, or exceptions that could be made for this circumstance. Uh, Diane's also right in that, um, you know, the numbers that we've traditionally seen, not just this district, but statewide have been really low for independent study because the primary mode of instruction has always been in-person instruction. And so, uh, you know, this is definitely a new legal requirement to offer this. And so you have to provide it in some fashion. And it's just a matter of figuring out for a one-year program, uh, you know, what does that look like? What does that offer, uh, entail? And how best can we meet the educational needs of the students? Because if it's not a robust program, we have to move these kids potentially out of independent study, back to in-person instruction. Uh, if they're not meeting the, the requirements that are set forth in their master agreement. So if we don't, if the district doesn't have, uh, comfort or doesn't have the staffing to provide that robust long-term and, uh, independent study program, we could see kids that even though it's a district-run program, may not be meeting that master agreement and responsibilities under that. And we'd have to move them back to in-person instruction anyways. So that would be another thing for the, the district to consider is in terms of how they're staffing and providing this program.
Thank you.
Um, if there's nobody else, I have a couple of questions because we do have public comment and we have several people who would like to address the board. Ryan, one of the, and I think this is a question for you. And the first question is going to be for you and Diane. So, and Dr. Prater, I believe you addressed this already, but in order for us to, um, to develop and implement, uh, a, a quality independent study program at this point for next year. How long do you think that would take? And how many, just a rough, rough idea, how many teachers do we think we would need not knowing, not, not having had back the results of the, um, of the survey that you're putting out? So how long, how long do you think it would actually take for us to, to implement the kind of quality program that we would be proud of to, to provide for our students in this district?
If, if I had to guess, I, I don't, Mr. Pinkerton, I don't want to cut you off. I think it would take, I think it would take several months to put something together like this. We talked about staffing early on and how difficult it is to get staff. We'd also have to be, um, very careful about, um, the, um, content area, the certificates that our staff have. You think about a high school student on independent study who has rights to A through G courses, right? Courses to meet their, um, graduation requirements. That takes a lot of different expertise. So finding staff that can cover all of that could be, um, time-intensive. There are a lot of other details in putting together an independent study program. I don't know, Mr. Pinkerton, if you have any thoughts.
It's a couple, just a couple of things, you know, just so the board knows, the old independent study program would, would entail a teacher, um, basically giving packets of work to students that they would do all week. And then the teacher would meet with them once a week for, for an hour to review that work, to make sure the time was spent, that they were completing everything. That was independent study. That this program that we're talking about now is completely different, right? This is basically virtual learning like we did last year. So daily synchronous instruction. So from, from an elementary standpoint, every single day, meeting with kids for multiple hours. Um, you, you know, at the high school level, you know, you, every, all five, six teachers that the student had, you know, they'd be synchronous, synchronously meeting with them, um, weekly, right? So you're talking about, you'd have to hire a ton of staff at the secondary level as well as, um, at the elementary level to pull this off. Versus you have some districts that have already set up these programs. They already have teachers. Actually getting the students to enhance the number of, of kids in their program would actually be a positive thing for them. But I do think a lot of it has to dictate the number of students that are going to want to do this. You know, if we only have 30 elementary kids, let's say, and there's five, uh, first graders, five second, five fifth, five, six, like you, you would have to have a teacher for each grade level. And so how many kids, how many kids will be available for that? So those are things that, again, we'll have to see what the signups look like. Um, I believe they're going to have to let us know by, um, by next Monday, right? What their intentions are so that we can kind of pull this together. But, um, from a logistical standpoint, it just made more sense to actually use, um, you know, some of the districts that we've had very successful partners with and the kids that have gone to those that, you know, have, it's worked out really well in the past. So, uh, but definitely something that we can look at. But again, we've also had, Chris, it very difficult time hiring teachers right now. We have, we have elementary openings in our school district in August. Like that's never happened before because we've hired so much MTSS staff and aides and all the other districts have so much money. Um, that we're having a very difficult time finding staff. So that, that, that would just be another thing to play into it in terms of, even if we set this up or we decided how it was going to work, we would still have to find the teachers to make it work.
See, so, so Ryan, just a, you know, a ballpark guess is in order for us to implement a quality, um, independent study program at this point, we might need 20 teachers?
Easy.
I don't know.
The secondary level is the toughest part, right?
So let's, so would we need, say, 30 teachers?
If you're gonna, if you're gonna give them, um, if you're gonna give those secondary students the options, the availability of the curriculum with different courses.
Which we have to do.
Right? And so remember last year when we did our virtual learning, um, you know, we had the in-person in the morning and then we had all of our secondary teachers teaching virtually in the afternoon for those people that opted out, right? So I mean, it, the, it, it just, it, it really would depend on, again, the number of students. And then again, the types of courses that we would want to have to offer, feel like we need to offer.
So, so Ryan, I'm, I'm, I'm going to try to pin you down a little bit on this. Would your guess, just a guess, I just need a ballpark guess, um, for us to do it again, an effective program that meets the requirements of, of eight, of the act, um, would we need 20 teachers, would you guess?
I would say at the minimum.
25? Would you be comfortable 25?
Yeah.
Okay.
Again, it depends on the numbers, but I honestly don't think we're going to have that high.
Okay.
Uh, so what we would have to see, but I was, at the minimum, probably 20 staff.
Okay, so Ryan, and doesn't it cost us about a hundred thousand dollars per teacher to hire a teacher?
Yes.
So we're talking about $2 million out of the one-time COVID money that we would have to spend to implement this. And it's one-time money, is that correct? And so, so Mike, so thinking about, we, we got what, how much money did we get? About $12 million, something like that?
Yep.
So that, so all of a sudden we have $10 million. What would, what would be taken away from students in order for us to implement an independent study program right now?
Well, again, we've, 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 we've done this huge MTSS push right at all of our school sites. So we fired a ton of staff.
Would you, would you explain what MTSS?
And so multiple tier, so it's basically multi-tiered systems of support. So, um, we have a, uh, we've seen academic losses right over the past year and a half. And Diane can talk more about that. She can probably give you a better idea of what MTSS, um, staff we have in place. But from, from basically TK through 12, we're putting a ton of, um, staff from teachers, aides, um, to provide students with extra opportunities to get caught up and, um, and, and have tutoring and have, um, extended, like, you know, learning opportunities throughout the school year. Because we have seen those academic losses over the past year and a half. And, um, you know, we need to make sure that we do what we can. So our goal is to take that $12 million, Mr. Unger, and spread that out over three years. Because we know that we're not going to make, we're not going to be able to make all these gains in one year. You know, it's going to take multiple years for us to get this, get kids back on track. And I think build this into the, into the program. So, um, my hope was that those dollars would extend our, you know, summer school and all of these MTSS programs that we've established, um, through the next three years. So by losing those two million, you know, that's something that.
It would be, it would be.
diminish the amount of time that we could keep those programs available to kids.
So really, you're talking about $2 million ongoing. So, uh, over the three years, a total of $6 million out of $12 million, is that correct?
If, if we kept the independent study program.
If we kept it, okay, great, thanks. And, and then the last question, I know that there were concerns, Mrs. Frost, about special education. And what, what happens to our students who are, who have special education needs? Um, can you talk a little bit about that, please?
I can. AB 130 really requires that, um, independent study is detailed in the IEP as a placement for the students. And as we all know, our IEPs are legal documents. Um, so students who do not have independent study in their IEPs currently will have to, um, hold an IEP team meeting with their sites. Parent always involved, IEP manager, et cetera, et cetera, to, to complete that meeting. And they will talk about the needs of the student and where those needs can best be met. But again, legal documents are IEPs and AB 130 really does detail that it should be in the IEP. And if it's not, you need to have a team meeting to discuss independent study.
And, and we're always required to, uh, provide a free and appropriate education for students that meets the students' needs.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right. So those will be robust conversations at the table if we're discussing independent study. And we have to believe that independent study is the right program for the kiddo.
Okay, thank you. And, um, and then I just want to end with, I, I echo Mrs. Schiffer's comments that what we're being asked to do in item seven, in item 6.01 is to approve something that will align our district with the current law and allow us to get started with the beginning of the school year. And, um, and I think that's really the issue we're talking about right now. I appreciate that we, you know, we're having this really good discussion about independent study and, and what the district wants to do ultimately with independent study. Um, but I think for us right now, what we need to keep our eye on is what do we need to do right now to make sure that we're following the law? And then we can get schools started in, in August and serve the, the needs of our pupils. Is there anybody else from the board before I go to public comment? Eve?
Well, as far as the present-day independent study, that is for 20 days, which I believe means school days. So that's like a month. Um, that's an option for parents to do. Um, but, you know, I'm just wondering if that could be extended out. So I know we're, we're going to be looking into all these things. And I would like to request a continuum of bringing this back to the board uh, with the results of the survey of how many parents, et cetera. Thank you very much for that. And, uh, just taking the model we have now for the 20 days and extending it. I, I say just, I don't mean to minimize the expense, but so far we've got about two and a half million dollars of expense, probably more. But we, we did have 12 million in COVID, so just saying.
Thank you. Mr. Whiteside, you can, um, add in if I miss anything. I think the CDE pretty specifically defines independent study as short-term or long-term. Does the CDE, Mr. Whiteside, say five to 20 days? Are those the parameters for short-term independent study?
So the, the, a lot of the changes, including the live interaction and synchronous interaction applies to programs that are longer than 15 school days in a year. So they use a little bit of a different calculation as to when those obligations kick in. Um, so, but, uh, you know, really what they're, what the Assembly Bill 130 is attempting to do essentially is to try to have this offer of a long-term placement, um, for students. So that way there's some stability to their program. If, if a kid is moving back and forth, um, or maybe is on a short-term program, uh, you know, there's different needs there. There's different considerations for the district when entering into that agreement, how well they're going to be able to track progress. And so, uh, you know, CDE, I think is going to give out more, uh, information about how a short-term program might work within the contours of AB 130 and how, where the exceptions lie in terms of the daily synchronous instruction. So I think there's more to come on that regard. Um, but ultimately, if we're looking at a long-term, year-long placement where parents know where their kid's going to be for the entirety of the year, then that's going to be something that's going to fall within, uh, AB 130 and those requirements.
Evelyn?
Yeah, I just, I'm, I'm a little bit confused in the sense of when we're talking about short-term versus, uh, you know, the long-term, which is really what we're looking at regarding the law. So regarding the short-term, the five to 20 days, uh, and I think you mentioned this, Mr. Whiteside or, uh, Ms. Frost, that that still could be, let's say a family, you know, needed to be gone. That is, they do not have to be, that's not synchronous video instruction. That can be independent work that the teacher is sending home, correct? And that is kind of what we've done in the past, um, for families that need to be away or gone or, you know, they have family emergency or traveling or something like that. And this, um, the law is really looking at the kind of a long-term, um, solution. And I, I hate to say that, but, um, for what we're being presented with parents, um, making a choice that, um, you know, independent study, which is this long-term independent study is very different than, um, and the requirements are very different, correct?
That's correct. So the threshold is from 15 school days and up, essentially.
Okay, okay, okay.
Great. Um, I'd like to open it up to public comment now. Um, and I'm going to read a statement and then we'll go to public comment. We'll be opening public comment for this item. As a reminder, if you wish to speak at the meeting, click on the participants icon at the bottom of your screen and select raise your hand. When your name is called, you may restart your video if you wish and unmute your audio. If you need assistance with your video, please let us know and we'll attempt to fix it. If you have a problem with your audio, please click on the thumbs down icon and we will again attempt to assist you. Uh, we don't have any written public comment, but we do have several people who wish to address the board. I'll begin with Maria Monzano. Maria, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, Maria, your three minutes begins now.
Well, I have a question. I have a student who's going to go into her senior year. Um, she only needs the area B, which is her English class, so she needs one year of English. Um, we had a meeting with her counselor already, which informed us that for her, her option, if she wanted independent study, um, she could do it through Templeton. However, that means the inter-district transfer. And by doing that, then she no longer is eligible to participate in the, um, high school graduation. Is that correct? Because what she wanted to do is be able to do her one year of English through independent study and still participate in the high school graduation. If that's not possible, then would she then request two weeks before the end to be then transferred back into slow high? Just for the last two weeks of the school year, just so she could participate in the high school graduation with the rest of her class, which she has been attending since elementary school.
Okay, all right. Um, you know, let's, let's take the rest of the public comment. And then if there's any questions that we need answered, let's answer them after we take the rest of the public comment. Thank you very much. Okay, next is, uh, Stacy Emick. Stacy, are you there? Stacy? Okay, um, we'll move on to Clint Firestone. Clint? Okay, um, we'll move on to Clint Firestone. Clint?
Hi, guys.
And then Stacy will come back to you.
Yeah.
Stacy, okay, Stacy, you know what? I'm gonna, I'm gonna come back to you after this, after Clint is done. So Clint, go ahead, and then Stacy, it'll be your turn.
Okay, so I just have a few, a few follow-up questions and comments about the discussion. And I appreciate that the district is willing to engage in this discussion with parents. One thing that I'm hearing is staffing, staffing, staffing. As I mentioned, we have nine teachers on special assignments right now, currently employed by the district. There's two administrators in that office. That's a lot of money to be in that office. And that's enough people that can at least do a K-36 independent study program for us. COVID funding, at this point, I have not heard or seen any money, $0, being put towards our students who are choosing independent studies. All of the funding is going towards students who are back on campus. I'm hearing that if we choose to independent study, we're going to be partnered with another district that who will be required to meet with my fourth grader one hour a week. I want to know if that person will be coming to the Flow Coastal. Or who, however that's going to look, someone's going to be meeting with my children for independent study. And I do not want to be expected to take them out of San Luis Coastal for those meetings. Those meetings should be held in San Luis. Clearly, the district is choosing to do this plan in the worst possible way. We're choosing to put all our effort on the students who are returning to the classroom and zero effort towards students who are going to choose independent study by the recommendation of Mr. Whiteside, who has no interest in our students or families in San Luis Coastal. I'm asking that the district please reconsider your plan. If you can't do it for high school right now, make it possible for our children at the elementary level and move forward by using that plan to create a plan for the rest of your students. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Um, we'll go back to Mrs. Emick now. Ms. Emick, your three minutes begins?
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
You can hear me?
Uh-huh.
Okay, thank you. So, um, I'm speaking for a lot of different parents who've been talking to me and my capacity of knowing what's going on with the situation. And they often don't because they're ESL. So here's the thing, public schools, they're our only option. They're at work all day, just like I am right now. I am missing out on whatever money I can make because I'm sitting here trying to do a virtual meeting when it should be in person and whatever. I know we can't do anything about that because you haven't yet. But here, this is public school, they don't have another thing that they can do. They don't have an option to homeschool. They're at work, they might have four, five, six kids at home. They have to learn English. They have to learn what we're doing. They want to assimilate. They want to be here. They wanted to be here because it's a free country. So in all this year and a half, all the kids I've talked to, which is many, have said, ones who like the masks, nobody likes the masks, the ones who don't mind them, they liked virtual learning. They did well. On the contrary, the ones who were against the masks and the shutdowns, they did really poorly on virtual learning. So the fact that you're making that the option, which you're now calling independent study, but it's virtual learning, for the people who it didn't do well for, and is proven by the fact that you just said there's going to be a lot of time and effort and money needed to try to make up for the fact that they did poorly, and they have to make up all this work. And now they need counseling and mitigation efforts and damage control, stop doing damage. How about that? How about provide the education, the fair and equal education that they are guaranteed under the constitution to the kids who need it? Because their parents need them in public school. And other people who can do other options and who are too afraid to be in public can do the virtual learning. Makes sense financially, it makes sense socially, it makes sense for education, makes sense ethically. I don't know why you guys are arguing about it so much. You're just, you're wheeling around the whole thing and not dealing with elephant in the room. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jen Griniger, please. Jen, your three minutes are beginning right now.
Great, thank you. Um, one of you mentioned that you have a lack of teachers right now. You've never seen that situation and that the perception was that they're going to other districts. Well, I can tell you that I'm aware that all of the districts in the county are experiencing the same thing that you are. And I am getting a lot of phone calls from those teachers saying they're no longer comfortable teaching in the public school system because of the masks that you're requiring them to wear and requiring them to force upon their students, which they're no longer in agreement with. So we put out a pod interest survey. We currently have 98 families, and it's growing every day, who are filling that out and saying that they're planning on leaving the school district, yours included. Many of them are from your district. And we are helping them organize through churches, through private homes, through ranches. Many of the teachers from districts across our county are volunteering their time. They're doing it for less pay because they want out so bad. So I think you're a little bit out of touch with what's really happening here. And, um, when you consider some of the medical exemptions that students have, and you're asking them to be on a computer, whether it's panic disorder, whether it's seizure disorder, those conditions are exacerbated by being on a screen. You're sentencing them to something that is intolerable, and that is why they're leaving. So I beg you to consider all these things. You're, you're, um, you're not providing a free and public education for your students. And these families do want to be back in your public school, sorry. They do want to be with their peers on your campus, but they don't want it to be in a mask. It is harmful in many respects, and you're looking at this with only one dimension. And that is through the lens of COVID, rather than through the lens of all of the other multitude of disorders that masks are creating, and viruses, and illnesses, and rashes, and not being able to understand speech. So you need to consider all of it and not just one dimension. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicole Dorfman?
Yes, I'm here. Let me
Okay, Nicole, your three minutes begins now.
Okay. Um, I, um, I want to ask you if there is a way to, just kind of think outside the box a little bit. For example, um, my son, we pulled him out of school because we didn't want him to do the virtual Zoom school.
I know. I'm so sorry. They had, they kept telling me
Sorry, somebody's speaking over my time here. Anyways, what this little private school did in Los Osos was they created
Nicole, Nicole, can you hold on a second? Whoever is speaking now, if, would you please shut off your, your microphone so that we can hear Nicole?
I just muted them. I'm sorry, it took me so long, it was real hard to find.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Go, go ahead. I did not, you know, I did not keep the clock running, Nicole.
Okay, just so you know that the host, the host is not allowing me to put on my video. I find it helpful to look people in the eye, especially
Can you hold on one moment, please, and I'll go ahead and do that, that's
Okay, hold on, and we'll stop. Let me know. I'll stop the time.
Thank you. Okay, there we go. Thank you so much. You know, I, I encourage you all to think outside the box, as I was saying. My son, we did pull him out of San Luis Coastal. He would have been a sixth grader last year, starting LOMS. And he instead went to a small private school in Los Osos, where they looked at the situation and just built outdoor classrooms. So basically, they got tents, and they put them up in their, uh, you know, outside. They have ample outdoor space, which I know many of our San Luis Coastal campuses do. And thank goodness, we have beautiful weather pretty much year-round. The children in Los Osos were outside year-round, outdoor classrooms. They did not wear masks. School was pretty much normal for them. And I'm so grateful. But, you know, that's, that's something that only people with resources can do, can go to the private school. And so I urge you to make something like that available to these childrens. I know the last speaker was talking about, um, different populations of children who, who can't wear masks. There is chronic illness. Unfortunately, we have a tremendous population of children who are chronically ill, whether it be physical illness, or emotional, or mental issues. Masking is a big issue for some children and some families. So how can we make it independent study is one option, and we're talking about how that will happen. But can we make outdoor classrooms for people who want to be in the school but can't wear a mask? And, and I know we hate to segregate people, but right now, that's exactly what we're doing. We are segregating, and we're creating a, a two-tiered system for children who maybe are second English learners who have disabilities that can't wear masks. So right now, that's what is happening. And I also am going to just put in another request for athletics. I think it's, it's just not right, and it's not fair to cause a, a child who's supposed to be at Morro Bay High, because you're not offering the independent study program, that they have to now go play sports in Templeton? I mean, that's, that's just not right. That's, that's unfair to our children.
Good, thank, thank you, Nicole. I appreciate your three minutes is up. Thank you very much. Mrs. Dawson, is there anyone else?
Yes, Amy?
Okay, um, Amy?
Hi.
Can you tell us your last name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. My last name is Nee Burke.
Okay, thank you. Okay, your three minutes is beginning now.
Hi, yeah, so I, I'm echoing, I'm sorry. I am just, I understand that you have to make a decision on this to be legal. And so what you do to make it go forward is what you need to do. However, I'm hearing, um, different families and reasons why they may not want to go back to school. And those reasons may be because they are very concerned about the health and safety of their child. And other, and I guess from both viewpoints, whether it is they want their child to be in an environment where they will be masked and vaccinated, and maybe not comfortable to go back into the classroom until the vaccine is available to ages five and older. Now, there's the other viewpoint where they are not comfortable having their child masked all day, specifically for students with speech impairments, as my children are. And I have, I have twins going into kindergarten, and I do not want them in masks. I need them to be able to see their, their faces. So my point is, and my question is here today, I understand that following the guidelines would not allow for a school to be designated for families and teachers to have mask and vaccine choice. But that is what I'm asking. I am a teacher. And hearing that you have jobs open in San Luis Coastal is absolutely amazing. I would have, I, gosh, that was my dream. I wanted to work for Bishop's Peak. But I know a person with my own ethical viewpoint. I can't force masks. Parents may not want it. And it's a parent's, parent, having, parents having that right, because we have to live with that decision. Whether it's the parent that chooses to vaccinate and their child dies, or they're, the parent that chooses not to vaccinate and the child dies. It's life, and we have to live with that choice. I would just love to see a school that was designated with strict protocols to protect those families, and likewise, a school with choice, if it's possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Dawson, is there anyone else?
I don't see more hands raised.
Okay, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the board. I want to just acknowledge all the people that talk to us and share with us. Their concerns about masks in particular, and I would just, you know, remind the public that the mask requirement is from the California Department of Public Health. And I'm sure Dr. Prater or Mrs. Frost can, can more specifically explain it. But my understanding is that, that school, that campuses, that students on campuses and people who are employees, who are working on campuses, who may have public contact with the public are required by public health laws to, uh, to wear a mask. That this is not an option. And that to do anything else would be to break the law. And that, that what we're talking about here is, do we go ahead and approve a board policy that will allow us to begin an, uh, an independent study program that meets the, the requirements of the law? So I would just leave it at that. And I saw Eve, you had your hand up?
Yes, I have three kind of summarizing questions as far as my concerns about what the parents brought up about the outdoor classes. Because I hadn't heard it mentioned by the district side, but I understood that that was an option and that it would be on a school-by-school basis. I'm sure they would want you to have those, from what I'm hearing, and encourage them in the schools as much as possible. So I'm wondering if that is going to be pursued. The second and third questions are, is there a religious exemption for wearing masks that will be honored, and is there a medical exemption for masks that will be honored?
Okay. Mrs. Frost or Mr. Whiteside, can you please answer the questions? I'm not sure about the outdoor, but I think you, you will know for sure about the exemption questions.
Yeah, absolutely. Mr. Whiteside, do you, would you respond to the exemption questions?
Sure. So there are a variety of different exemptions that are permitted under the California Department of Public Health guidance that would allow for a student to attend school in person with, without a mask, or specifically a face mask, you know, the cloth that would go directly over their mouth. That exemption likely would result in the student wearing a face shield with a cloth draped in lieu of that mask. And obviously, there's going to be individualized, case-by-case discussions with families if even that face shield is not going to be permissible or, or an option for that kid, depending on the, you know, the, the circumstances of that exemption. The, uh, there, and that, those exemption, that list of exemptions that was provided by the Department of Public Health does include a medical exemption as well as a mental health exemption. There is also an exemption for pedagogical interests. So if there's some, so, and for communication with a deaf or hard of hearing individual as well. So there are a variety of exemptions and, and possibilities there for students to still attend in person without a face, like the, the actual cloth-based mask that we, you know, have seen pretty, pretty routinely throughout the pandemic and was put in place as a protocol last school year as well. In regards to the religious exemption, you know, the California Department of Public Health does not specifically identify it as an exemption, but I think we would interpret it under our existing case law that analyzes First Amendment rights. And so what I can say is that that would likely involve the individualized discussion with that person who is making that request under that framework. But I, I do know that it is not specifically identified by the state as an enumerated exemption.
Okay, sounds like there could be some avenues of pursuit that parents could go down for that if that's what they want, instead of a virtual independent option. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Uh, Mrs. Sheffer?
I just have a very brief point of clarification. I know a speaker indicated that Mr. Whiteside did not have any interest in our school district, and he lives in our district and has children in our district. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
And I'd be happy to, you know, I'd be happy to be able to respond that, uh, you know, my, my comment is about, you know, what the state of the law is. As I mentioned earlier, the district could develop its own program if it so desired. And I gave reference to what other districts throughout the state were doing to start that type of program.
Could you say that again, please?
Uh, yes, so there is an option under the law, under Assembly Bill 130, for the district to develop its own program. And that other districts throughout the state have indeed started a program, but most of those, in fact, all of them that I am aware of, have done that through an outside service provider, providing those services.
But on their campuses?
Not on their campuses, it'd be virtually.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Buckman?
Yeah, Chris, you're looking for a vote on this?
Yes, we need, we need a motion and a second, and then we'll have further discussion. I'm sorry, Mark.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve this item on the agenda.
Okay, hold on, hold on a sec, Mark, I want to write that down. We have a motion by Mr. Buckman and a second by Mrs. Sheffer. Okay, is there further discussion from the board on this particular item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board, and this will be a roll call vote as Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board and this will be a roll call vote as are all of them. Mr. Buckman?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Sheffer?
Yes.
Ms. Dobler Drew?
Yes, with follow-up. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Mrs. Frame?
Yes.
Mrs. Roger?
Yes.
Let me make sure, one, two, three, four. Who am I? Dr. Eisen Drath Rogers. I'm sorry Catherine, I didn't catch your.
Yes.
Yes? Could, okay, and I'm a yes. The motion passes uh seven zero. Um, and then I think you, you said you had one final comment, Ms. Dobler Drew, and then we, I'd like to move on if that's possible.
Yes, what I meant was, thank you for following up on this, not letting it drop by weight and never to be heard from again. I'd like to keep this as an ongoing discussion about the possibility of us looking at other options, we're considering the very restrictive climate that education is operating in right now. I think we owe it to our parents to look carefully at other options because nobody has said this is only for a year. Um, these lockdowns, you know, they could go, they could come and even if they go away, like I think Ms. Sheffer was um alluding to the temporary nature of this. It is not clear that if they go away, that they're not going to come back because many scientists are saying just, ju, just that, you know? So I just saying, let's keep the conversation going about this and developing. Please bring back the results from the, the parent surveys and all of that for us. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Buckman and then Ms. Frame?
Well, Chris, I, I have a question. My understanding is once we take a vote, we're done with this item. Am I wrong? Uh, we're going to launch into a conversation at this point?
Yeah, we, we really, I'm, I'm trying to avoid this. Um, you know, I, 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 as, as I try to do for all board members, um, I try to, to, to allow them to make comments, um, but you're right, Mark. Typically, we would never do that. This, this item is, basically this item is closed and so we, we don't have any more further discussion on this particular item. Evelyn, did you, Evelyn in Maryland?
Um, yeah, that was my point of clarification.
Yeah, thank you.
It sounded, well, I just, just clarified, it sounded like Ms. Dobler Drew was, was asking for information, but what you're saying is, and that would per board protocol require some kind of.
Yes.
Right.
Although.
In this case, we have taken a vote.
I, I have not asked, excuse me, I have not asked for information. Mr. Unger was being very kind to say, what did you want to say when I said follow-up? And I, I just meant to follow up. I wasn't asking to say anything more, but given the opportunity, I did expound a little bit. So I am protocol. Thank you.
I, I, I think, I think what, what I got out of, out of your comments, Eve, was not a, not a further request for information, but um essentially thanking the district for um, for the other things that we have asked, that we asked for along with this, including um at some point a continuing discussion on independent study, which I believe the board had a conversation about, um, being updated on this, the um achievement of our students who are in the independent study program. So those are two things that, that I think that, that I heard you talk about.
That's right.
Mr. Buckman and, and go ahead, Mark.
I apologize, Chris. This is what I heard from Ms. Eve Dobler Drew's comments. I heard the word lockdown and I don't mind us discussing things. Um, I don't mind the board. Um, if you want to allow clarification, I do mind inflammatory information, uh inflammatory language that is, is meant to provoke and to taint um everything that's going on in the district. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask the board um, as, as there seems to be some concern about my allowing Mrs. Ms. Dobler Drew to um follow up what she requested at the vote.
Oh, no.
Is that, is that, is that something?
I just meant the district to follow up with us, that's all.
Yeah, is, well, I guess my, my question is a procedural question. Um, so, so I went ahead and did that. Is it the board's preference that uh from now on, that, that after a vote is taken, we, that, that, that there will be no more discussion, no, no more follow-ups? You know, if somebody says I, you know, I'd like to just thank you. So is that the board's decision? Because I can, you know, I'll, I'll live with whatever you guys want. So tell me if, if, if you, if that's what you want, give me a thumbs up.
Sure.
Okay. So the thumbs up is that when it's over, it's over. Okay. Great, I can live with that.
And, and Mr. Unger, and Sir Unger, I just want to clarify also that we, we will keep the board updated on our progress on independent study and what we're learning along the way, including the survey. So you can expect that information in both our Friday update as well as the regular updates that we provide in the soups updates in our board meetings. Just so, so we're clear, okay?
Very good.
Thank you.
I'd like to move on to item number seven, which is uh our action consent agenda. We have four proposed revisions. These would be second readings. Please let me know if you want one poll and let me get to where I can write that down. Seven point zero one, proposed revisions to board policy four zero three zero, non-discrimination in employment, second reading. Seven point zero two, proposed revisions to board policy four one one two point two, certification, second reading. Seven point zero three, proposed revisions to board policy four one one nine point one one, four two one nine point one one, four three one nine point one one, sexual harassment, second reading. And seven point zero four, proposed revisions to board policy four one five one, four two five one, four three five one, employee con, compensation. And nobody pulled any of those. I'm going to go to the public to see if anybody from the public wants to address us on the consent agenda. Mrs. Dawson, is there anybody who'd like to do that?
I don't see any hands.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. Would someone like to make a motion to approve seven point zero one through seven point zero four? Mrs. Roger, I see you've made the motion. Would someone like to make a second? Seconded by Dr. Eisen Drath Rogers. Um, let's see, I'll go down, Mrs. Roger?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs., Dr. Eisen Drath Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frame?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Buckman?
Yes.
Ms. Dobler Drew?
Yes.
Um, Mrs. Sheffer?
Yeah.
And I'm a yes. Motion carries seven zero. Um, just re, remind everybody that there, in the information section, there is an uh item eight point zero one, which is the forty-five day budget revision, which everybody I know will be interested in reading. And otherwise, the board, the, the meeting is adjourned. We will have a study session oh next Thursday. Um, we'll be discussing our measure D updates. Thank you very much and I appreciate everybody who participated and thanks to the board for this decision. Thank you.
Thank you.